Tonight, I'm going to call the Raytown EMS Fire and Murder Discussion Committee to order. And first, I would like to thank everybody for their attendance this evening. Tonight, we have Alderman Steve Mock, Alderman Michael Lightfoot, Alderman Jason Green, and Alderman Charlotte Nelson. Additionally, tonight, we have city staff here with Mark Lowery, Doug Jonesy, and Kevin Sage. Tonight, we will not have any public comments at this meeting as it is a discussion of the Raytown Fire EMS merger proposal information that we have received. However, if you have a comment on this issue, I would encourage you to contact one of the Aldermen on this committee. Our emails and other contact information can be found on the Raytown City website. We do want to know how you feel on the subject. So, the issue before us this evening is Raytown Fire District proposal to merge the Raytown EMS department with the Raytown Fire Department. Each Alderman has been provided with background information previously for their review. So, tonight, we will start discussion while we get any questions or comments from the committee concerning the Raytown Fire District proposal. And I will open it up to the committee for any of your comments or questions.
Yeah, I guess my comments or questions will be more directed towards the folks that are more enlightened than I in the subject, so discussing amongst ourselves or including them as well.
No. This is only between state staff and ourselves. It's kind of a discussion of what we have learned in the proposal and perhaps questions that we can answer or staff.
First off, in looking at a response from Fire due to some questions here, and I'll just read the question here regards Mr. Matt Mace, I believe, responded to an inquiry. It says, "Is it possible that through your mutual aid?" The question presented to him was, "Is it possible through your mutual aid agreement that the EMS crews could be dispatched outside of Raytown, meaning the city has no coverage?" It says your mutual aid agreement. And I'd like to make a distinction that, you know, there's a difference between automatic aid and mutual aid, and I don't know if that was accurately reflected within this email here. That's something that I have several questions about, about the difference. I know Kansas City has some issues with coverage on the east and south side, and I'd hate to see Raytown services subsidizing, you know, their Kansas City's values. So, that's something that I think could be a topic later on that we can bring up. What would the EMS's role in that? Are they subject to an automatic aid agreement if they were to merge with Fire? And, I mean, I know right now EMS has mutual aid, but there is a difference. Would we have an increase of EMS calls to Kansas City? Response times obviously does be affected, and obviously, if Kansas City has to cover Raytown, if Raytown's over there, are their, you know, are their ambulances ALS or BLS? You know, I hate for, you know, ambulance services being out of town, and obviously, Kansas City having to come cover their service. So, that's, again, some questions I would have in regards to that, just to kind of summarize some talking points, some concerns later on. And I'll, I guess I'll give any of you guys a chance to maybe respond or have any additional comments about that.
Well, the mutual aid, both Fire and EMS has had mutual aid for a long time. You know, that's something that is now metro-wide because if there's a plane crash, you know, because, you know, the jurisdictions would have to respond in the sense. But, right now, automatic aid means that, my understanding from the Fire Department is that they're on automatic aid, so they can be called into Kansas City, which leaves Raytown without, could be without staff or without truck. And then, the automatic aid, if we needed something, then 350 Highway or 47th Street could be called into Raytown. Raytown has ALS, Advanced Life Support, on their trucks. Most, or quite the percentage of Kansas City does not have that. They have BLS, which is basic life support. And so, if Kansas City was called into Raytown, they're responding with BLS and not ALS that would be. And another thing, too, is that, as a resident, I want Raytown to show up.
I agree.
I don't want Kansas City. And I would understand that if we were in a mutual aid, or a mutual aid type of agreement, but not if we were automatic aid, which is now a KC, and what dispatch Fire is, is the automatic aid.
Yeah, and that, again, the ALS versus BLS, obviously. And then, obviously, you know, my understanding is, Raytown Fire now has dispatched to Kansas City as of June 1st, or is it?
June 1st.
June 1st. My understanding is that that has impacted, I guess I would say that it seems like Raytown is out servicing Kansas City more than Kansas City is coming and servicing Raytown. And again, I just have concerns that I don't want to subsidize Kansas City's problems. I understand the mutual aid component, but with an automatic aid, it's just, it's a different type of arrangement, and I think that's something that we have to look at and be considered. But, at any rate.
I also think, too, that with the Raytown taxes how to pay, the Raytown residents are paying towards that levy, towards Raytown Fire showing up, not towards Kansas City showing up.
I know in the first month, it has a problem, but it is getting better.
Well, I remember reading that. I remember reading that the first month, there was some problems with it, but I guess, and we have a small sample size, you know, it's only July, late July, but I guess it's getting better. Yeah.
Michael, did you have some?
Well, I'd just say, before we move on to the dispatch discussion, that clarity under the difference between the operating arrangement of ALS versus BLS for people that may not even know what that means, or they may be watching this online or interested in that difference, could you give us a technical description of the difference between what we perceive to be the case of Kansas City operating under BLS and Raytown operating under ALS?
ALS stands for Advanced Life Support, which is at the paramedic level, it is more advanced than the basic EMT level, which is what BLS stands for, Basic Life Support. Now, at the paramedic level, medications can be given, a non-automatic distributor is used, there are more advanced airway options to the paramedic, to the basic level EMT. And it's approximately four times the medication ALS versus BLS. Now, that being said, all of Kansas City's ambulances are ALS. I don't know whether it's all of their fire trucks are BLS or just those in the area of Raytown, but I'm told that the ones in the vicinity of Raytown are basic life support.
You said all Kansas City's ambulances?
Their ambulances are ALS.
Are ALS.
Yes.
But the fire trucks are either all BLS or not all ALS, some BLS at least.
So, then, some of the questions that arose already were, a Raytown resident that may feel as if they are funding Raytown Fire and EMS, basically because they are through their taxing, may receive subpar treatment if Raytown's, you know, out running a KC call and KC has to come in and do a medical emergency. Do you think that's accurate? Do you feel as if, I understand mutual aid, and I know how that works, but just on a standard, a standard situation?
It is possible that a person with a medical emergency in the city of Raytown could get an ALS fire response from Kansas City if both the Raytown Fire Protection District's trucks are occupied.
Thank you. Anybody have any additional thoughts and concerns?
I think that covers the technical version of what I just wanted to be displayed for whoever may be watching this, and for all of us to understand better up here, and I know you guys don't get it. I'd move forward here, just to ask questions next.
I'm curious how response times could potentially be affected with an EMS, I guess, under an automatic aid agreement. My concern is, obviously, that they'll be diminished, you know, this is life or death situations, literally, and I'd hate to see anything that could potentially hinder the quality of care that we provide our citizens in our community, and I think that's got to be the primary goal, no matter what. I think everyone here would agree. And so, I guess, you know, I'm very curious to, I almost wish we could have a dialogue today, just because, you know, I've got tons of questions that I may be asking wrong, but...
Well, what we can do is, especially through this, I'm trying to take notes and stuff. If we have specific questions that we want answered, we can certainly itemize those and have those specified.
Okay, yeah, so I guess maybe later on, the question should maybe be asked is, you know, how could response times be affected with an EMS under an automatic aid agreement?
I was wondering if they could be answered now.
Well, it's a public meeting, it's a telephonic.
Yeah. You know, obviously, you can have, we already discussed the potential of increased EMS calls to Kansas City, but, you know, with limited resources, you know, God forbid there's a third call, if you will. And that's really all I really have to present in regards to response times.
Okay. And what else?
I'm curious on dispatch. So, staying on that, dispatch used to operate through the city of Raytown, and now it's handled by Kansas City. How long will that arrangement last, or is that a permanent arrangement?
That arrangement is through Kansas City Fire and Fire District, Raytown Fire Department Dispatch.
I may have an idea to answer that, but I'd hate to get the wrong answer from all the Fire guys.
And I'm like you, I wish I could ask.
Yeah. Um, yeah, dispatching do runs through Kansas City, though, now, I believe that's an accurate statement.
And it's 18 months.
18 months, that's where the scale's off, that was a year, so they're not being the same.
I'm still, let's see, with the Fire Department right now, why they're here, I understand there's been two, three questions now, advanced towards them, right now, that would probably be answered in a matter of seconds, so, you know, to get the questions out, they're here, get care of, and they go on, we can still ask the questions later. But, they're here to, they're here to answer.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it would be obvious to have them and be able to answer a few questions now, that's what I'm saying. So, I don't know how you all feel about this, but this way I'm hearing this meeting going right now.
Well, I've got other questions regarding EMS that just, he brought the topic of dispatch, and I know, really, that is more directed toward Fire. Not sharing the meeting, sir, I don't think that's, I don't think we do that, I'm not sure.
I have other questions, too, in regards to some of the numbers here on dispatching for EMS on the, on the cost here. Look through the report here. It's marked in the proposal that the city of Raytown currently spends $90,000 on dispatching for EMS. I thought the number was different.
In 13, no, 12, 13, but there is no cost to...
Yeah.
Correct your budget. Correct your estimate, the cost for dispatching for Raytown EMS.
Okay, so the current budget, there's zero for dispatching. Okay, then the question I have is, why solicit $90,000 and then inflate it for the next 10 years?
Well, that's Fire Districts.
Well, yeah, it has to comparison, though, between, yeah, between what Fire spends and then obviously what the city spends on EMS dispatching, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Because, I mean, if that, I'm just curious how accurate that number is, and if it is accurate, then fine, but if it's not, then that changes these numbers up significantly. I mean, we're talking about, you know, almost a million dollars over 10 years.
Mark, do you have anything?
I think the challenge you have with that is, at one time, when they were trying to do the program-based budgeting, they tried to figure out what percentage of our dispatch services were beforehand, and then based off of that percentage, they generated $90,000. I think the challenge there is, is that even if EMS goes away, we don't eliminate dispatch. So, the cost of that service to the city stays the same.
So, dispatch goes to Kansas City, correct?
Well, but we're still going to have on the city side.
Well, yeah, let's refer to police.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, there is no true savings. There is an expense associated with dispatching EMS right now because we have those people on board downstairs to do that. However, even if EMS wasn't here, we would still have those people dispatching, and we still have the same equipment.
I just want to know why it's credited to, well, I guess, City Raytown.
And I think, in fairness, that was part of the budget in previous years, and so, when Fire was preparing their proposal, they took that budget, that number was in there, and so they utilized it.
I just don't, yeah, I mean, again, I know we're spending that money, but I just don't think it should be credited just to EMS as a savings, if you will, if it's going to be spent, whether it's an EMS or not, you know, then, okay, we're going to make that. So, I don't know, I just thought that was interesting.
I do have a question, and this is something I've heard from residents, and I've heard it brought several times to me, and I wondered it myself. Can you explain, if the merger were to happen under the proposal, how would it work with city EMS employees' seniority levels merging with Fire? So, yeah, that's the question I'm asking, how would it work? Would the seniority level stay the same for the EMS, or would it be adjusted? I think I understand how that works, but I'd rather hear the response from you.
I understand that pay level would be taken over approximately at par, however, seniority would stop. The Raytown EMS people who would be taken over would be at the bottom of the seniority list.
These are all questions, as I understand it, talking to the Fire Department.
I don't think I've read it like that.
Well, I was confused in how that actually worked myself, and I know I've heard this question brought several times, and it's a valid question. So, I'm understanding you to say that the pay level would stay the same or actually move to a level that the Fire has now?
As I understand it.
That's in the current.
Okay, and I saw that, but as far as tenure or seniority, or however you want to call it, that would, if I were an EMS worker that had 20 years in, I would not be able to keep that seniority level.
As I understand it, that will be the case.
And that's also regards to, like, shift assignments or vacations, things like that, obviously, I think are questions that we would have to get input from Fire.
I agree, and I do want to, I want to get asked the same questions.
Do you care if your employees are governed by a collective bargaining agreement, if they're the union and all that, what does it mean?
As well as they belong to loggers. One, you could ask, it's twofold, one is the pay, second is the retirement. There is no change in their retirement. They're both under loggers, they're under a lower program than we are.
They get the better one under us.
They'd get the better one under us.
Yeah, but obviously, seniority, you know, again, like I mentioned, shift assignments, vacation, and even who gets laid off are all things that I think that we have to ask in terms of, yeah, basing it off seniority alone, and if it is, is there preferred treatment or not, things such as that are all, are all concerns.
I think they're all valid questions, and I, the merger, you know, may be advantageous for the city and for EMS and the Fire, and it all may be a good thing. I just want, I just have the questions that you're raising. I want to make sure that, you know, I don't know if you would call it fair, but I wish, I just want it to be, you know, EMS has put in a lot of time or service, I want them to stay recognized for what they've already done and what they've contributed, and not lose any sort of standing level in what they, you know, came here to do and have been doing. I want to make sure that's, that stays that way, it just seems like the right thing.
And any burdens that are going to take place if the merger takes place, you know, obviously, both departments share.
I have a question. In Raytown, RFPD has prepared for pending retirements and plenty, plenty, a career development program has encoded that preparation into a strategic plan. Preparation into a strategic plan is something that I'd like to know, I think it was going to be answered back here about the strategic plan, what is that strategic plan?
For the Fire?
Yes, for the Fire, page 11. I don't know if we talked about the employee turnover right now, too. I'd like to know more about that. Through you, Mr. Jonesy?
What's the question?
On this 72-bonce EMS has seen a 64% turnover rate versus a 3.7 for RFPD. Okay, is that turnover rate including the two directors? And is that, was that any part-time also?
I don't think that would include any part-time. It would include Mr. Bogman and Mr. Kusman. We have had some turnover, it happens.
Yeah, yeah, I see that. Okay.
There is no single issue to which that can be attributed. Partially, it is because there are some people who get into EMS not for the long term, but they want to start their medical career in EMS and move on to nursing, or medicine, or physician assistant, or some other medical career. Some get into EMS and decide they don't want to continue a medical career. Some people look for another job because of uncertainty whether the current job is going to exist in the year.
But, to myself, that does look like a pretty good size, the turnover ratio there. But, go on.
Any other questions?
Yeah, in regards to this, again, this letter that Mr. Mace, his response, which I appreciate, again, a chance to look at. I guess the question was asked, the proposal shows nine full-time staff, once you get your ideal staffing levels, but it's the city's belief that it takes at least 12 to fully staff, to fully staff two units, and how you address the shortfall, and obviously, he agrees that it takes, requires 12, but I'd like to say it takes a minimum of 12, to my understanding, here and operate, two ambulances, so, you know, three shifts, 24 hours, 12 would be like bare bones. You know, God forbid somebody gets sick or something, so, again, that's something that I noticed. Now, obviously, there's going to be reductions in personnel if this merger will take place as written, but I just wanted to make that, you know, this committee aware that, as you probably may already be, or at least the folks watching, that, you know, for two ambulances, you have to have a minimum of 12. 12 doesn't seem to be the, to me, 12's not an ideal number, you know, people get sick, things happen, you know, life happens. Also, under this, am I correct in stating that they, in 2014, according to this proposal, they have EMS at 13 for total staff? Is that, am I correct in that statement? I believe that's what I saw.
14 current staff?
No, no, current staff, I believe, is 15. I think, I thought there was 14 plus one in the office for, and I think this report said it was 14 total staff, and I believe the current staff, the current staff's actually 15. Yeah, this question right here has, mentions that current staff is 14, but, excuse me, 14, but actually, I thought it was 14 plus one, one in the office, I don't know if I count that or not. But, at least what I saw, I saw EMS in terms of the proposal with 13 total staff in 2014, and then 2015, 10 total staff plus one in the office. And again, these are all questions just for us to consider, looking at the schedule of where these labor cuts are going to be made. Again, I do think if a merger does take place, I think everybody has to share in the burden, and I'm not saying some people aren't, I'm just, I think that's an approach that seems, again, I hate the word fair, like Alderman Lightfoot used earlier, but it seems, it seems like a reasonable approach, I would say.
Well, and you also have to consider that during, through this proposal, the city would still maintain the license and also all the liability and the building. So, you have quite a bit that's still on the city, even though it was required.
Yeah, so the billing still goes, so in terms of the billing, yeah, it still goes through the city, it was required to collect the bad debt and all that, okay. Because I know that we had concerns, and there was questions brought up by, oh, I think it was the meeting before I was even sworn in, that, about the billing and collection of the bad debt, I think Alderman and Dan Brooker brought those, brought that up, and I was curious as if that would stay the same, and I'm taking it it will.
And Doug, that is correct by this proposal, that the city would still do billing for...
That's a requirement of the license.
Right. And would still maintain all the liability since we are the holders of that license.
There would be liability in conjunction with holding a license, I think, to individuals. The liability would be shared between the two agencies as well as the individuals involved. That's why we maintain liability insurance.
Well, right, right. But, we are, the city is still the ultimate holder of that license, so some of the work happening after the, the city is still liable because of that license. And there is also with the Raytown Fire Day Grant at this time with the nine firefighters, so there is that concern that if that grant was not renewed, that, and that goes back to seniority, if that grant was not renewed, then, then they had to do some shifting of positions, you now have all of EMS that below seniority, and so those nine positions could be taken over by Fire instead of those EMS staff.
And the other one, I guess, yeah, 2015 is when that, when that, the one is, and I, again, another question maybe to ask Fire at a later date, since we can't today, would be maybe, and I hate to play like an odds game, but I'm, you know, curious, like, in terms of the feeling of renewing that FEMA grant, you know, what they feel like, you know, how's the outlook, how outlook look for such? I know the federal government's kind of, not the most dependable agency at times, but still, you know, money being run dry or not, but I'm curious to what their impression is of their, of how optimistic they are of that grant being renewed.
And the second fold to that question would be... And the second fold to that question would be, you know, do they, do they anticipate the grant being renewed, as well as if not, how would that affect the operations?
I think that's another thought, another thought, those questions.
Yeah, I think they mentioned that they'd have to go to the public, maybe for a levy, if I'm not mistaken. I guess to make ends meet.
Other specific questions that you guys have? Because what I'm thinking of is that with some of these specific questions that we've gone over to have Matt Mace address those, just Matt, and, but have that specific questions. So any other kind of discussion here as far as things that we want to bring forward to that?
Rather than do that, guys, what would it take for us to sit down and have an honest discussion, and to address these like grownups and have a conversation? I think it would just be a lot easier than to keep passing notes back and forth. So does David need to set that? Does my fire board, what do we need to have so we can sit down and work through these issues as a group?
Well, I think tonight, it's basically because most of the meetings that we have are, are all public meetings, whether it's pension board or whatever, so that's why it wasn't public discussion, that's why it was set like this. This is a little bit different, and so with some of these questions that we've had, if we can just go ahead and ask us and get a response back.
Right. We did that in those, they've lived more questions, and I think sometimes dialogue is the best approach. So whatever we need to do to have that, we should do that. Versus, versus, obviously, Alderman Green has questions that he needs to have answered as they, on the fly, and I get that, I do the same thing. I can, I can type up till I'm blue in the face, but it's just going to spawn more questions that he didn't think of until he read them. And this could, this could take on, I mean, if we're going to have this conversation, let's have this conversation. And I understand we can't do it tonight, but let's figure out what we need to do to have that happen.
So as far as tonight, can you offer just, you know, on mutual aid agreement, you know, doing that KCMO is, you guys are on an automatic aid, how would that affect EMS if they were to come to Raytown Fire? I mean, just kind of answer back as far as that, so we can expand and understand perhaps what we've been reading, and, and have us say, okay, now I understand mutual aid, I understand automatic aid, I know how it works now, but that brought up something else.
And I'd say, I mean, I agree, dialogue is definitely the best, because written documents are written documents. We've all read them, it's no different than when we go to an Alderman meeting, we've read our agenda, but sometimes the meeting lasts for five or eight hours, you know, it still happens. So I totally understand that point of view, and I would like to be able to have an open dialogue totally with this whole process.
Sure. If I can go ahead and inject us with having an open dialogue. Anyway, you know, your mayor made it very clear that he did not want anybody from the district at this meeting.
That's not correct.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not correct.
And the reason that was poor is so this meeting, I understand, kind of get a grasp of this, ask questions and kind of figure it out amongst ourselves, and then offer questions back, of which none of us really like that, because we want to be able to talk it through more than sit down and show it writes out 15 questions and Matt has to have, you know, answer them back. So if at this time, with some of these questions, if you can just kind of do that explaining back to us of what the current status is, like the dispatch, like the mutual aid.
Verbal or written?
The verbal, since we're all here, and the questions that are, that are being asked.
I'd like to ask the automatic aid versus mutual aid first.
Okay.
That is under contract with the district in Kansas City. I've had discussions with the chief of Kansas City, Paul Brerardi, about that very same subject you're talking about. In any instance where we have a new player within the contract, our contract with Kansas City will then be reviewed, and with the permission of the city and with the fire board, then they can choose to elect to go to an automatic aid agreement or not. It's not automatically, since we have a contract that Raytown EMS comes in and it's automatic done deal, that's not true. As far as dispatching goes, what's your question? What can I answer for you?
That how response times affected?
Response times affected are measured in different ways. One of the ways that we are currently measuring with the Kansas City report is the time the call taker at Kansas City Dispatch first picks up the phone and enters the first keystroke all the way to the time that the crew goes in route. Then it's measured from the keystroke to arrival. The difference in dispatching times would still be the same as far as road travel. What's, the difference is, is the amount of time it takes for the crew to get that call from Raytown Dispatch, either to the ambulance or to the fire service. Now, there is a delay, I would not deny that, there is a delay, because there's an intermediate person that has to be involved with the PSAT. In Raytown, the caller picks up, and then whenever fire is needed on the call, either be EMS or fire related, then that call then gets transferred to Kansas City. The two dispatchers then have a conversation, and then Kansas City dispatches. So to answer your question, response times, as far as road travel time, are the same, near the same, as far as the, the difference in total elapsed time is the, the time it takes for the call to be handled from one dispatch center to a second.
Actually, deliberate, our road travel times have actually seen an improvement, simply because our trucks are now equipped with GPS tracking devices, so the dispatch center knows where they are and sends the closest truck mathematically, which is before we had boundaries. You know, if the caller originated between 52nd Street or 53rd Street and 70th Street, Station 1 went. If it was 70th Street South, Station 2 went. Well, Station 1 may be at the grocery store, and we didn't know that. Or, you know, there's different things that we wouldn't know. Now, the, the computer in the dispatch center knows exactly where that truck is, which direction it's headed, and mathematically plots the closest truck.
Closest truck has been Raytown's truck.
Anybody's, anybody's. It's, it's measured by speed limits that were posted on, on the roadways that would be the most logical for any apparatus, whether it be fire or EMS, to take from point A to point B.
But is Raytown responding to that?
It's the closest, closest fire truck. So if Kansas City's driving through our city, and a car wreck comes out, or somebody's not breathing, the closest fire truck goes. Now, I've been a paramedic 18 years, I was Doug's partner for three. You know, the first three or four minutes when somebody's not breathing, somebody needs care, it doesn't matter if you're BLS or ALS, if it's your kid not breathing, you want the closest person going there.
That follows with the fire department, show me that. Take me for instance, okay, fire department shows up first, because you guys are the closest there at that time. Okay, that's, that's a question I had.
But that only started?
June.
In June, because of the KCMO, but, okay, that's my thought.
We were under modified mutual aid for about 18 months. That was the 18-month figure that we heard Mr. Green say. Is that, is that what that 18 months was, you would mention?
Yeah, because I thought, do y'all have KCMO dispatch for 18 months? Did your boy have it for 18 months?
No, that's, I don't know where you got that, that isn't true. That, that hasn't ever been brought up, is that we're going to terminate that in 18 months.
You currently have Kansas City dispatching though?
That's correct, since June 3rd, at 8:00 in the morning.
And at what, is that no cost, June 1?
That's correct.
Okay. And when does that expire at no cost?
That's undetermined. It could, it could last forever, or it could change.
At the will there is.
At the will of both, both sides. We have 60 days to respond to that, should they decide that they want to either charge us, or that we don't want to have them dispatch anymore, then we have 60-day window in which to make a change.
And Matt, maybe I'll add to this, and there was a question on the $90,000 dispatch that was from...
When we had the first meeting with the city, we asked Mr. Law for audited numbers, because, you know, obviously, we wanted to have as hard numbers as we could. And those audited numbers, they reflected $90,000 occurrence for the city's dispatch. We took that to be, you know, even, and I think there was a note in the 2013, our 12 budget, that said, even if this number is removed, it's still as expense that's charged to EMS, however, it didn't make sense to actually take money from one budget to the other, went to the same budget. Is that fair, Mark?
I think, I mean, that, that's the gist of it.
Just of it. So that's where that number came from. We realized that you still have dispatchers downstairs, we weren't sure if you'd need as many dispatchers as you have, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of assumptions we had to make. That's where, that's where that number came from, it's from your audited data.
Matt, do you have percentages for like 2010, 2011 responses for medical assistance?
What do you mean?
Like in, 2012 is 82.7% of the fire district's responses were for medical assistance.
We have, the fire district averages between 78 and 80% of EMS calls a year. It changes a little bit here and there, depending on if we have severe thunder, or severe weather come through town, or we'll have, in fact, during the ice storm, we had an extraordinary amount of fire calls that came out, that skewed that data a little bit. We average about 80% EMS versus 20% fire calls in our response now.
And were those calls always in necessity?
No, ma'am.
So a lot...
But with the dispatch system we have now, you know, the dispatch call takers try really hard, but they're not medically trained dispatchers. So if somebody calls and uses a word like critical, like critical lab value, they send us anyways, even though it may be a hemoglobin that's off by a tenth of a percent, that the word criticals in the titles, they send us. We go, we do the best we can, we realize they're doing the best they can. Are we always needed? No. But that's the way it works.
The reverse is true, too. Sometimes we get dispatched out non-emergency for a lift assist, and it ends up being a true medical emergency. We responded non-emergency because that's the information that we received.
And there's some dispatch?
Right.
Can you address the issues with the seniority levels?
We, Mark, and nobody has come up with a plan today. Simply being, is those employees are governed by a collective bargaining agreement with the city, at which time the, the city decides to move forward, the union would be involved, and they would be who we'd have to negotiate with. And that's why, and that's why we have not, we, we, what we were, the scope of this project that we were given from the city was, it has to be a win-win for both agencies. If the district does not give up something, the city will not entertain it. If the city expects to give up something, and that, we understood that. If any employee loses anything, including their job, the city would not entertain it. Now, you mentioned in there about layoffs, nowhere in our proposal we find the word layoff. Our goal is to keep every employee as long as they can, until they, people either retire out or find streams to move out, in which time, our goal is to get down to a certain number. So we are not going to alleviate personnel to do so.
And so along that line, can you address the grant renewal aspect?
I can't, Alderman Green is the longest.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, my idea began...
Thank you very much. Perfect. So when you mentioned the layoffs, our lack of, it'd be strictly through attrition?
Yes. We, we actually, when we met, in that 13 number you came up with, before, is the city had lost an employee, and they had dropped them down, she went to Independence to be a firefighter. What we'd asked them to do was to impose a hire and freeze, and we would do the same while these negotiations were going on. I don't think that took place, and I actually think they filled that position. So there's one more person that will have to eventually just stream that, should this proceed. But the goal was, is both sides, we do a hire and freeze, once we get all their employees trained at the same level we are, as our, as, as our employees to that point, they all would be, as they retire out or find other jobs elsewhere, because that's just the way the nature of the business is, we would not fill those positions. But nobody would, no one would lose their job.
That is, and that'd be the same for, for fire?
Yes, sir.
And along that line, if there, there, because I've talked a lot to EMS, and there's some concerns that they don't want to be fire, because they like EMS, that's what they have, have grown to love, they want to be the, you know, that, and they don't, and then I've also heard from the flip side of that, that there are firefighters that don't want to do the EMS. And so I have, you know, a concern with, you know, with that individual that wants to do that, that's fine, but you do have individuals that probably do not want to do that cross-training or be responsible there for.
There's two different issues. There is the training issue, and then there's the actual issue of how they work. The training issue is, we, we're limited by, by the 7K exemption rule, which basically, if you don't know, firefighters are not paid on a 40-hour work week, we're paid on 56, 56-hour work week.
53.
53, 53-hour work week. So we don't incur overtime until we hit 54 hours. You know, for to qualify that, you have to be trained as a firefighter. So we have said, as far as, we've had three requirements we need to have in there, is that everyone must pass a health and safety physical. Go to the doctor, go to the workers' comp provider, we give them a standard, and we get a letter back saying yes or no, they can meet it. And, you know, I'm sure our workers' comp provider mandates that, or, you know, it's something we have to have for these people to be, to be employees of ours, all of our employees currently do this. Number two is, they have to be trained to firefighter 1 and 2, which we would do in-house, and utilize, you know, on the personnel, and move them through it as easy as we can, to get them to where they meet that 7K exemption standard. That's, that's issue one. You know, would they have to be trained to be firefighters? Yes. Number two, would somebody have to be a firefighter? Yes and no. If you showed up on an ambulance, and somebody was handing a baby out of a second-story window because their house was on fire, guess what? The dispatch should be a firefighter at that point. That, that's what we would expect of our personnel. We believe there's enough opportunities out there for people who don't want to work on an ambulance, people who do, that people can find a role that fits them best. Is it going to be perfect? No, it won't be perfect. But we believe there's enough opportunities out there, you know, through the different spots, that people can go where they want to be.
And on that line, let's say that there's a fire call, because on fire call, you guys got a house burning, God forbid, and EMS has to go, because they are on standby to make sure that firefighters, if they go through two oxygen bottle things, something, have to come back out and get checked, kind of thing. But there's a need for the, and, and those two that are in the EMS are firefighters, and there's a need for those firefighters, do they go and leave that no ambulance, or have to call in the second ambulance and leave the rest of the city without the ambulance?
Ever seen a fire?
I understand that, but I mean, that was just...
On 99 of all fires, their role would be there as EMS, support, rehab, you know, those issues. You know, for whatever reason, if we had a scene that was growing, growing unpredictably, and different things had to happen, I couldn't, could I tell you 100% of the time, they would not have to put on gear, or spray water, or do something like that? No. Because I wouldn't be being honest if I did.
One of the things to back that up is the automatic aid agreement, in that whenever we do have a house fire, we get close to 50 extra personnel, including Kansas City ambulance. Now, we have discussed that with the chief of Kansas City, and saying, Raytown EMS shows up on the scene, we will assign them patient care for civilians. They will be there. They can assist with rehab of firefighters, but the Kansas City ambulance is there for their firefighters. All together, we work together as a team. So if they're put into medical sector control, Raytown EMS is in charge of civilian injuries.
So now, if, if there's a Raytown house fire, and the Raytown EMS would show up, and they're the, what do you call it?
They're in the EMS rehab.
Right, okay. But they're only EMS fire rehab, because you might have to call in KCMO fires. But they're only EMS fire rehab, because you might have to call in KCMO fires.
If there's a working fire, it's automatic, they will come. They're picking it up, they'll assign fire trucks, as well as their, their personnel that are around us, according to the type of structure it is.
Because their, their ambulances carry rehab supplies for their employees as well. So they've come to help rehab their employees and what have you. Yeah, and to be fair, you know, we've had house fires, where I've had police officers assisting with putting out the fire, and assisting with pulling people out. So I mean, we already do this now, it's just a matter of what title we give people.
I believe you had a question about attrition or turnover of personnel?
I did.
Yeah, the, the figures come from the numbers of personnel that have come and gone for both services. The, the difference, and I can help qualify this, but not totally, because I was also a paramedic 13 years, and I can see that EMS is a young person's job, over a period of time, that starts to wear on a person's body. Pay is an issue, length of time that they spend working, the types of calls, all of these things come together, and it's typically known in the service as burnout. People get burnt out, they get dissatisfied, they're looking for better jobs, paying for better services and that kind of stuff, so they tend to, to go out. It's the nature of the beast, and it's happening across the country. What the difference is, is that we can slow that down by providing a career ladder, that if paramedics on the ambulants right now choose to do so, and become firefighters, then they have opportunities to drive the fire truck, become company officer, chief officer, and a number of different tasks that are available, and that is the career development plan that was mentioned in the proposal, is that our strategy is that we have cross-trained individuals that are firefighters, that are also cross-trained as drivers, and captains, and so forth. Paramedics are the same way, they can cross-train right now. Jeremy is, is one, and he's already cross-trained as, as a driver, and as a company officer. As attrition occurs through our department, that makes upward mobility available, where in Raytown, or any EMS service, there's limited opportunities for that individual to find a career ladder, that he's either, it can be, he or she's going to be assigned, or chose to be a director, or maybe a training officer, if that position even exists. I don't know if there's any other available positions within your organization, Doug?
They are limited.
Pardon me?
They are limited.
Yes.
I'd say career ladder, however, the city says, as we stop at Kansas City, discuss-
We, we try to emulate those other departments in doing the same thing that they're doing, in that we offer our individuals in-house training. We'll bring in entities such as Missouri Fire and Rescue Training Institute, to give specialized classes in, in learning how to become a company officer, or a driver, or any number of things. So we've got a series of different training types of courses for each position, that these individuals, that so choose to, to advance in, can do so. And there's, there's related pay as well, so the incentive of it is pretty nice.
I'd like to, I don't know how correct this is, but we, we can get, if, if a merger were to take place, we, we can get no plan on the seniority and how that works until, until after that was placed.
During, during-
Okay, so I guess the question I'm asking is, there'd have to be a merger before we would be able, or fire would get a chance to negotiate with the union, or is that something that's pending right now?
It would be a three-part negotiation, to answer your question. I think it's simple to answer your question.
Because I, I think, you know, a lot of folks would feel a little better, having some foundation on that.
Well, if all the ducks would have to be in a row, and all the stuff would have to be ironed out, or it would ever be brought back to the city.
Okay.
So, um-
Can you tell us a little about, about license liability? That was a question we had. The scope we were given was, the city, it was not an option to release the license. That's where that came from, and that's what we've built upon. As far as the liability, the fire district, and actually, in the, in our, you know, concept, is the, the fire district would also identify the city under our liability plan. So the liability there would be, be under the fire district, under our insurance provider. We've already talked to them about identifying, identifying the city, and it would alleviate that portion of it. If that, that, you know, certainly, the fire district's not opposed to looking at and having a discussion about the license, if that's an option, but we were led to believe it was not.
Do you understand why the city has to retain the license?
Do you understand?
I don't know.
Under, under the Medicare laws, the provider that owns the license is eligible to get Medicare reimbursements. If you give that up, then you give up the Medicare reimbursements.
We would, yeah, we would assume the bill at that point.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So the, the liability is already in your lap right now, as far as the non-payment. There's no change there.
And you guys started to ask this, and this part, they were already asked, I think, about the fee rate renewal?
You did, and we went to-
Yeah, I missed that section.
We've been, we've been really fortunate in the last 18 months. We've applied for five fee grants and gotten off fire. 100% success rate. Do I have a good feeling about renewing it? I think we have a strong case. The reason why we went out for the grant, and I explained that in the letter a little bit, was when property values declined three years ago in Raytown, fire district was up against its cap, and did not raise its rates like the city and school district did. So we had to absorb that hit. At that point, we were eating our reserve fund, because we, we didn't change anything. As a matter of fact, we took it across the board pay cap. But that allowed us to, when we went before the voters to get our station remodel, and those things in 19, in 2005, and hired six personnel, we promised the voters we would not go back before them for 10 years. The grant allowed us to extend that window to get close enough to that 10 years that we were, we didn't want to be dishonest to citizens. And that's the route we took. We, it should, if we would not have gotten the grant, we would have gone before the voters and explained our case, and hopefully this would have been out for us again.
So you're not planning any potential, potential, I guess, levy increase until around 2015?
As long as, as long as, you know, we can keep making a good case, and the, the federal government is, is helping us out, there is no plan at this time.
Okay.
At which time, that does not, and that's our plan B, we have no other choice.
And if there was not renewal of that grant, what is your plan B?
Go through the voters.
So it wouldn't be the elimination of those hires?
No, we'd go through the voters, explain to them that the, the, the amount we absorbed through the decline of property taxes, and make our case.
That was the question I had, if anybody else has had a question here, can you ask the city staff?
I think there was another question about the staffing, and Paul, you, Sheriff Millen, Matt, you probably helped me with this, is that the idea was that through normal attrition, through fire and EMS personnel leaving for various reasons, that there would not be any need to hire anyone. Now, it was the fire district's response, that they would help supplement that staffing to that ambulance, because we have both EMTs and paramedics, depending on which side lost an EMT or a paramedic on any particular shift, then we would assign them, we could take that concept, saying, okay, we have a position, you're, you're the, the extra medic on this truck, and you're going to drive the bus this day. So the, the constant staffing would be 12. Did you, did you follow me there?
We, we, okay, picture this, we run a three, a three platoon system. We have an A shift, a B shift, a C shift, just the same as EMS does. On a, on a current day, we staff with 10 personnel on fire truck, with the duty chief. EMS staffs with, on a good day, five, so they have, so there's 15 personnel plus duty chief. Under our model, it'll drop to, I did the math through my head, nine and four is thirteen. So we have a leverage of two personnel, with knowing with a minimum that we can pull two more personnel off the truck, should somebody go home sick, or should that person up leave that day. And so rather than to have the extra person on the ambulance, we would use those fire trucks to float pool, to, to keep our staffing levels where they are before we have to hire them. Right. In, in addition to that, when we hire overtime, instead of pulling from a pool of 12 to 15 personnel, we're pulling from a pool of 36 personnel. So there's a lot larger pool of full-time personnel who will come back for recall for overtime, without having to have mandatory recall, or things of that nature. The way, you know, and the reason, how we came up with that, was, you know, we were coming up with different staffing models, and one of the guidelines that we were given from the city was, is the district had to give up some staffing, it couldn't simply be on the back of the city. So that's where we pulled off one person from each shift of fire, from the fire truck, to put them on the ambulants, through their eventual staffing model, as well as to use them as the flow personnel, should somebody go home sick off the ambulance.
Can you get a member close by for, because we have a call, a patient, we're going to see him.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, there is. Okay. The current position without fear of losing their jobs, okay, the city employees, can you go back and explain to him to that, and the 53-hour work week of making sure that they do not lose their jobs, because I know there is some employees-
You know, one good side of the city retaining the license is, is basically, we would bill the city for the actual cost of employment, we'd have audited numbers of the city, but we'd have a person who was a dedicated contact, and Mark, and then we'd give them basically a bill for service. So at that point, you know, the savings we did, under our proposal, we projected them out, is how it could look. I can't tell you we will be there in five years. It depends on what happens with personnel, people that leave. You know, we know there's going to be people that leave, statistically, we've, we've had that. Our goal is that nobody loses their job. We, and that, we, you know, I was given that task from our local, as well as our board of directors, is that they would not entertain anything that meant somebody got laid off. And that's, that's, that's what we came up with, was, we will bill you for the service, all of your employees will come over, everybody will have a job as long as they want to have one. As far as, as far as the 53-hour work week, we talked about that it's a federal mandate, so basically, they have to be trained to the firefighter one and two level. It's roughly a, help me out here, four-month course, you know, goes over, it's, you know, starts off with basic stuff, as far as like hose streams, and fire extinguishers, air packs, and moves on to, you know, some more advanced things, but, you know, nothing onerous, we're not making anyone take the, the physical agility test that so many people were worried about, just because we don't make all of our personnel take it. If you were hired before a certain date, you were ramp up it, and we thought the city's employees should be treated the same. We don't, we didn't ask anything of your employees, we're going to ask for ours.
Now, Steve, I, the main, the main thing we've got to keep in mind, and I think we've lost kind of track of it, is that this is, this is a trial thing. My understanding was, you know, we're going to do, we're going to do something for a year, you're going to keep the license, everything works out like it didn't, blew springs, sooner or later, that's going to come to us anyway. The, I, I think what, if you was at the first meeting, I don't think he was, but Charlotte was, that was kind of the disagreement that me and the city manager got into about our employees. And nobody, and our argument was, I know I care more about employees than he does. He's the city manager, and I'm not. So that's what we got into it about. We made that commitment, I made that commit, in fact, the mayor insisted on that, nobody loses a job. With that, nobody has to get on a fire truck. It's like they said, if you can't pass firefighter one and two, then you probably got no benefit in being EMT, let alone being a medic. So that's, and we're, and we can do all that in-house. And all we're trying to do there is, is that's why we got the advantage that you don't have. We can work our employees 53 hours a week before we got to pay them overtime. You work yours 40. If nobody absolutely, just absolutely don't want to get on a fire truck, don't want to be a firefighter one or two, then they can do what we call them, in the, in the service, we call them, they're a day job. They'll work eight hours a day, 40 days a week. They can drive an ambulance, they can do everything they do, except they're going to be doing it 40 hours a week. The advantages that we got, that you don't have, is we're all cross-trained. You got 13 medics, we got 16. Everybody we hire is a medic now. It's, I mean, that's where the trend's going. Raytown is the only community I know in, in the metropolitan area, that's not what we call fire-based EMS. They've all put it into fire service. They do that for a reason. Cost-effective. All you have to do is look at the numbers. Your expense is in your employees. It's not in running ambulance, it's not in anything you do, except it takes more employees to do it than what we can do with. That was the intent of this. If it don't work, if it don't work in a year, you still got everything in place. We go back to doing what we do, you go back to doing what you're doing, and in fact, when we're probably doing a lot of your work, and we don't even bill you for it. Stop thinking about it.
Well, and that is one of my concerns, that with the, a year trial, that I don't think I would entertain because of the uncertainty of that with staff.
To be fair, that they, actually, in the proposal, we outlined a 36-month, was it a 36-month agreement? Annual?
Right, but I mean, that's one of those things that, you know, that's, that's really good, but at the end of that time, if it, you know, if it doesn't work, okay, fire gives it back, we may not have any staff. We have to start over. So that's very concerning, very in the-
That was one, I mean, we discussed with that, but it's the license issue. You know, maybe if, like- That's where I think we need to have a good dialogue and a good discussion. Nobody's, we're not saying, if you don't give us this, we're not doing that. But, you know, whatever would make the board comfortable, and make my board comfortable, is kind of where we need to be. I think, I think somewhere in the middle, there's a little meat, happy ground.
Um, can you get a comment from the committee?
I don't have any more questions. My questions have been answered, my basic questions, and there's a whole lot of, you know, number of questions, this, that, that don't amount to a whole lot. It just, the whole thing is, is a complicated situation. It boils down to three measures, for me, and, and basically, will the citizens of Raytown get, I'm not asking this, these are just, this is a comment, will the, will the citizens of Raytown get the same or better service than they currently get? Will the citizens of Raytown save money, taxes? And will the employees involved be treated as good as or better than they are right now? So there's only three things that make it advantageous, and those are the three things in my mind. You know, the, the citizens get better service, the citizens save money, and the employees are treated as well as they are now or better. Those are the, those are the three topics that really concern me. Just my two cents, and I don't want anyone to feel like this is some sort of a session, because for me, I, I wasn't at the first meeting, and I am new to this committee, and so I've definitely read it all, but still, the questions are there. And they're, it definitely not meant to be a, any kind, anything other than just back finding, and what is best for the citizens and the employees. That's, that's where I'm coming from for this whole thing. My two cents.
Honestly, for me, you know, just to echo off all of them, like, it's, comments, that's, the number one focus on my mind is, you know, obviously, the quality of coverage, and for our community, obviously, you want to make sure that the employees are taken care of, and, and does the same, so I, I'm right on board with you on, on those three objectives.
The housing of the employees, the ambulance, the equipment, and everything else, so there's adequate space in your stations?
Yes, sir. I'm pointing that when you build the stations.
Okay. There, that's, okay, thank you. I was trying to see it in there, but that's good. Am I correct in stating, I'm sorry?
I listen, yeah.
Am I correct in stating about the current EMS building, if, if, if this was to, to take place, and obviously, if, let's say-
and obviously, if, let's say, you know, 36 months come and things aren't looking too well, that the city retains that building?
You retain it whole time.
The whole time?
It's not our fault.
Oh, okay, okay, I saw that.
No, city keeps that building here for whatever it costs.
I was thinking for some reason that for a dollar, we'd get it back or something.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, buy a coke and get it back. Yeah, okay. Okay, so the city would keep that, okay?
Doug, did you have any comments or anything that you wanted to make? Mark, do you have anything?
I think what you saw, the dollars, it's actually all the equipment. So, we transfer the equipment to the ambulances and all that, and if anything happens, we give it back for the same dollar. That Matt has graciously offered to pin on as well.
Sorry, actually, I do have one more I want to make. When we talk about saving money, 92% of savings contained in the proposal are those three personnel to be subsidized by the fire district. If you count those into the true cost of operating EMS, which it is an absolute necessity to have those three full-time positions occupied, if you can't do two ambulances with nine people, the savings proposed falls by 92%. According to district's numbers, the cost of this through personnel, total cost of employment comes out over the 10-year period to $2.36 million.
Does it cost three employees 10 years as?
Yes. If you count, if you take their nine plus one numbers and adjust them for 12 plus one, then 92% of the proposed cumulative savings goes away.
Anything else? From the committee? So, at this time, we need to make some type of decision as far as another committee meeting, perhaps with city staff, chosen fire, EMS. We can put this on pause to come back at a later time and discuss it. If through this conversation you have additional questions that you need posed, if you have answers to, you can do that. So, I would entertain your thoughts on the next procedures of the committee.
Well, I'd like, you know, some kind of, I guess, obviously a public comments section, so we can, I can hear, you know, a variety of opinions and have additional information brought forward to where, you know, that may support or challenge, you know, previous statements.
I agree with you. I think, I think maybe on that part, if this is to go forward and manner some of the, perhaps, issues ironed out a little bit more concretely before it would be brought, really, it would be brought to the Board of Alderman, and then at that time, public comments would be for. And really, anybody can give public comments to us at any time. I mean, this public documents are more than, you know, welcome to read them, ask questions, have us ask more questions. So, I mean, the public comment part of it, because I struggle with that, is still opportunity down the way.
One thing, one of the parameters we were given when we did this was, is there was concern about having it by the fiscal year. So, that was why we put a timetable in our proposal. If that's still a goal of the city, I would encourage you to keep that in mind when you make plans, you know, so we can work running up against that. If it's, if that's not an option, then it's not, let us know, because we, at this point, we've been on a whole pattern, waiting to see what happens.
It's going to make your budget process complicated, should you decide to include four years' worth of EMS budget items versus talking about moving over to the fire district. Do you see what I'm saying, and follow me there?
Cleaner in November as well.
Yeah.
Then that's just because that was the guidelines we were given.
Either way, we'll work with you on whatever it takes. If it takes longer, it takes longer. I'm not going to have to say hurry to push us through because of your budget, whatever it takes. And if you would like to come over to the fire station and sit down and talk one-on-one, I would encourage you to do so, including talking with the union people one-on-one in private, so you would understand their point of view, rather than speaking open at the meeting.
Information from them. But again, from the committee, what would you, what is your pleasure?
Can we do with a more of a roundtable discussion right now? And then, actually, within the next week, 10 days, fire department, local staff itself.
I think that's.
Is that what we're looking at?
I mean, we could, I don't know if that's.
I think there's a lot more questions out there.
I think one of the things too, though, is.
They have questions back towards FST, yeah.
Sure, but as far as you going and talking to fire, or you going and talking to EMS or city staff, that's always open, you can always do that. And, and perhaps, you know, I would encourage that, that you have, if you have time, I know Jason's done that somewhat, I've done that, I haven't talked to a lot of fire guys, but a few, to be able to get a little bit more background information or understanding.
Have been, what, liaison for the last three years with the fire department, so get a bit of understanding.
I'd say Mr. Mock's suggestion as a roundtable, open forum dialogue type of thing, which Matt suggested, I think that would be a good idea.
Honestly, that should add to that, so, I'll link it to that.
And is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then, I will have, check that out, and see if there is an opportunity to do that as far as dates, collaboration on that time or date, and kind of what the guidelines of that would look like. I certainly don't want a big roundtable with a lot of paper throwing across the table. But again, I think, you know, as far as individuals, to have conversations is a great thing, but also have to have those questions too, because if this does go any farther, then there are some things that have to be ironed out. And as we discussed earlier, you know, especially with the union and how employees, because they represent both set of employees, so I think that's an important thing too. Perhaps, understanding from where they're coming from too, and how they view the proposal.
Are we going to try to set a time for the, this roundtable type discussion?
Well, I think we're going to have to get together to figure that out, with city staff as well as fire people to do that. So, I would. I know, you're holding up. I think at 3:30 a.m. So, I will check on that for the next meeting with fire, EMS, and city, and committee. Anything else of comments by the committee? Okay, so I want to thank everybody who participated in tonight's discussion, and I encourage anybody, issues, concerns, comments, to make sure that you can contact one of the Alderman here in this committee. Then, our information is on the city website, so you can find us that way. And anything else that you all feel that needs to come before the committee at this time? Hearing none, then this committee is adjourned at this time. Thank you very much.